Good morning, everybody, and thanks so much for having us here. Mayor Kerner, County Commissioners, Administrator Baker, and all of our staff and members of our public.
It's up to you.
So we are extended.
So we're looking forward to giving you an update on where we are with the election today. Got to spend some time with Commissioner Weiss last night as we worked on our canvassing board and got that started. So it is absolutely beginning. As you know, 2020 is proving to be one of the most historic elections, and I know everyone that comes up, we say this is one of the most important, this will be historic, and this one is no different. So I think it's going to continue going that way because we are witnessing record-breaking registration numbers, high voter turnout already with our vote by mail. We have an unprecedented expansion of the vote by mail request, and of course, we're dealing with all the uncertainties related to COVID-19. So we've got a lot going on. Yesterday, October 5th, was our last day to register to vote in the November 3rd election. We had hundreds of people at our offices yesterday. So I think the great news is we are, we had really great response. We ran some ads in the newspaper and La Gea, The Sentinel, and The Post reminding people. We had about 200 radio ads over the weekend and all types of, different types of radio stations, really pushing, trying to make sure that we're giving everybody that last opportunity to get in to register to vote. So we, it did work. We had a lot of people there yesterday. I got some numbers for you just now. I found out in-person registrations at our office yesterday, 2,642. So in one day, in-person registration, which, so that's an awful lot. And we did, we tried, we had it, we staffed up, and because we didn't want any of those folks to just drop off their registration, find out that it was incomplete for some reason, and then, of course, it's too late to get them to complete in time. So we actually had everybody stay while we processed their applications right there so that we would know if we needed to get additional information from them or fix addresses or anything like that. So that 2,642 are actually people who had successful complete registrations. So we're very excited about that. Online, and the state did have some issues with their website at some points during the night last night, and they had some things that backed up. So I can tell you that this is actually going to be a little bit more than one day. This is probably close to two days. But about 8:00 o'clock last night, we received 10,020 online voter registrations. So that tells you, just in a couple of days, we had over 12,000 registrations. So very exciting and very successful. Right now, our numbers without all, without processing all of those, we're at over a million. We have 1,012,693 voters that are registered to vote in this upcoming election. And so for those who are casting vote by mail ballots, it's already begun. We have over 439,000 vote by mail requests, and we have over 99,000 people who have already returned their ballots. So for the March election, we had a total of 89,000 returned for the entire election. So we've already beat that, haven't quite beat the August yet, but we are at over 99,000. So that's a lot. About 75% of those are sending in through the mail. We're getting a lot of drop offs. We have lines actually every place doing that. But I do think that the prepaid postage that you all agreed to, while we're hearing a lot of people say, oh, I don't want to use the post office, I'm going to do drop offs, and we are seeing that, but at the same time, like I said, we're seeing 70, 75% of the people are using the mail. And the comments that we're getting, I just want to thank you and what you did for your constituents because that prepaid postage has really made a difference. And it's, again, and that's for everybody. It's a combination of, I just don't have stamps, and you know, they're going to be odd numbers, it's accessible for everybody. So it was a really great thing that you did. So we're continuing, we expect that increased vote by mail response rate to continue. Right now, we're trying to make sure that people understand that they can only drop at one of our four offices because there's, has been some confusion. We have had some people who have dropped into book drops, you know, at night, at the libraries. So right now, the, by law, you can only drop at one of our four offices. We, of course, do have the outside box at our, at our main office, and I have great news from the county that it looks like we're working and we will likely by the end of the week, certainly early into next week, we'll have the cameras done at the outer offices. And we do have drop boxes ready to go to be put at the outer offices as well. So thank you to Todd and Administrator Baker for agreeing to let us do that. I know it, it's a lot of work, especially with the 24/7 camera surveillance. We were able to actually get that paid for with CARES Fund grants, so, at the state level. So we're able to pay for the cameras at the state level, and we appreciate your willingness to get that done. So we'll have those, and I think that's going to help a lot with the lines. I know South County, we had 2,450 ballots dropped off in one day at South County. So that'll give you some indication how busy it is down there. So beginning October 19th, however, the law does allow us to collect vote by mail ballots at our early voting sites. We do have the early voting sites, we have 18 early voting sites, and they're going to be open the full allotted time, you know, by statute. So 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., October 19th through November 1st. And during that time, people can not only early vote, but they can also do drop offs or vote by mail at the locations then. In addition to that, we are going to be doing vans. So right now, in some of our locations, when you park, Jupiter is one example, FAU is another, when you park, you still have to, you know, take a hike to go to the early voting location. And even though you don't have to stand in line to drop off your vote by mail ballot, we're trying to figure out ways that we can just avoid. Again, with COVID and people being concerned, we want to make sure that we have the fewest number of people all congregated together. So we have secured 25 vans that we are going to have wrapped so that it's going to be clear that these are official drop locations, and we'll have them at 17 of our 18 early voting locations. And we're going to take one of those, our main, our Buglade office is also an early voting location, because that's going to have a drop box there, a permanent drop box, we won't need to have a van there. So we're going to take that van and move it to Pahokee. So we'll have 18 vans out at early voting locations, one, or 17 at early voting locations, an additional one in Pahokee, and then an additional seven throughout the county. By law, we can have just drop box locations where there, as long as it's a place, we could have an early voting site. So we're going to have these vans, they'll be well wrapped so that they're properly identified. We'll have people who have Supervisor of Election shirts, they'll have a table, they'll have a, about a two-foot-high box that is going to be, again, clearly marked so that we can let the public know these are safe, appropriate places that are, you know, part of our office so that you can drop your box and your ballot off there. Again, just trying to make it easy for people to get their ballots in because we know that, again, it is a concern. And by the time we're getting into early voting times, that last couple of weeks leading into the election, is when I think people are going to have more concerns about using the mail. Certainly, that week before the election, we'll be encouraging people at that point to start dropping off. So that's going to be, I think, a busy time for us, and we're hoping that that's going to be very successful. We are working on getting pictures of what the vans are going to look like so that we can start a big media push to make sure everybody knows about those. Couple other things that we're doing to try to really push things out, in addition to the, to those vans and the mobile locations we've already started, like at our main office, we've got people out trying to do mobile drop off. So our, we started this yesterday because our parking lot is so difficult to get in and out, and we don't want to cause accidents, and we, again, want to make it easier for people. So to the extent people are just coming through to drop off the ballot, even though we have the outside drop box, during the busiest parts of the day, we started putting somebody out in the median, a couple of people, and they, if people are interested, some people like to drop it off in the box where they want to actually see it clocked in. But for those who don't care about that, that we are collecting sort of mobile drop off at our main office right now. We're also investing in some more Evid equipment. Evid is what is the, is the equipment that we're using for check-in, and we can get Evid equipment that we can walk a line. And we're very excited because we were able to obtain a grant that's going to pay for these things that I'm mentioning. And so we're going to be having, if we can get additional poll workers, they'll be walking the line so that during early voting, we can let you know, if you're here to change your address, let's get it started. If you're just here to make sure that your vote by mail ballot was received, we can tell you that so that you don't have to go and get in line. And certainly, we know nobody's intending to vote twice because that would be illegal, and we don't want that to happen. So we're going to be pushing, pushing that on Election Day, if we can get enough poll workers to do this as well. We'd like to make sure that, to the extent we have lines, we have people walking those lines again. You, while you can change your address up through Election Day, we don't want you standing in line at your old location only to find out that now you've got to change, because you've changed your address, you've got to turn around and stand the line again on, on Election Day. Because on Election Day, you can only vote in your precinct location. So by having people do that, we can let them know right away, in line, you're going to need to go to a different location, this is where you would go, and we can even print it out and give them directions right then on how to get to their new location. We are adding more cybersecurity in terms of cameras, both in our warehouse and at our main location, to be able to oversee all of the equipment, all the things that are going on there so that we are sure that we are, you know, keeping that integrity of the voting file in our elections very secure. We have additional ballot counters and ballot processing equipment that we're working to obtain, and that's, again, just going to go with the huge increase. We are, right now, when we, when we did our proposed budget for you, we had, we had sort of put forth where we saw vote by mail going over the next five years, and this was right before COVID started, and we have exceeded where we expected to be in five years already. So, so that's just kind of tells you where we are. So with all of that, we are, we, we're going to just do some things that will help us to make sure that we're doing everything as efficiently and accurately as we can. So we have some additional, we can do it through scales, they're actually very accurate, the paper scales, to help us to make sure that we're looking at the right number of ballots at every step of the process so that we can keep our ballot accountability within that warehouse that you all see at all the different stages. We can make sure that we're fully accounting for every ballot and every piece of paper along the way. We are also going to be offering incentive, many call it hazard pay, but it's one-time incentive or hazard pay to poll workers so that we can get additional poll workers. We think that, you know, money helps everything, and so to the extent that we can get some more folks interested by increasing with a one-time, this will not increase our regular poll worker pay, we are already, no, we're not, we may not be the highest, but we don't think that there's many people, certainly in South Florida, we're right up there, we do pay more than Broward County, I know. So we are very, very well placed in terms of what we pay our poll workers now, but because we know these are difficult times and we want to make sure we're doing it, again, this is one-time grant funds that we will use to have an incentive pay on top of poll worker pay, which we'll be announcing this week, with the hopes that we can get more poll workers so that we're making sure that we're able to open timely and hopefully do a lot of these things that we want to do. In addition, we will have janitorial services that are available, you know, that will be constant at our polling locations for early voting as well as Election Day voting so that we know that our sites are going to be clean. We know people are concerned about COVID, and we want people to know that we are spending equal amounts of time making vote by mail accessible and making that something folks can do and feel good about, as well as making sure for those who choose to go to vote in person, that we've done everything we can to make that a very safe and secure thing for them. So we're hoping that we can get yet an additional 1,000 poll workers to be able to do a lot of the things we're talking about with the walking the lines, staffing our drop sites, making sure that the vans that we have in those parking lots so that people can just come up into the parking lot and drop their ballot off at all of those locations, again, to make it easier. We're going to do a lot of public outreach. We've already started, we've got newspaper campaigns, we have some TV campaigns, we're doing a lot of social media on, you know, not just your normal things, trying to make sure that we can reach every demographic and every age group, you know, everything that we can do to try to get the word out because there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of disinformation out there. And we want to make sure that Palm Beach County voters are getting the best and the right information. So we're going to be doing a lot of radio, a lot of TV, a lot, a lot of TV, it's too expensive, some TV, a lot of radio, again, a lot of social media, and emails, texts, phone banks. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that people are getting the right information and that as we learn about things that messaging we might need to get out. One example is, you know, there was a state that said if you didn't turn in your privacy sleeve, your secrecy sleeve, that your ballot wouldn't count. And they actually did. The court threw out people's ballots because they didn't submit a secrecy sleeve. Okay? Crazy, yes, but luckily, not the case in Florida. So we've spent a lot of time trying to make sure that folks know you don't need to worry about that. In Florida, you do not have to return your secrecy sleeve, but we're now starting a campaign to get that out. Also, with the weather, we're hearing throughout the state, people are finding that their ballot, sometimes, you know, it leaves our office, it's not sealed, but the internal envelope, sometimes, if it gets wet, it's in the rain, you know, when it's being delivered through the postal service, they're finding that it's sealed. Certainly, we're happy to send them a new one, or they can actually, they can open it up, they can use a paper cutter, they can use their fingers, they can open it up as long as they're signing it, and then they can just tape it up. And as long as it's not, you know, masking tape or duct tape that's going to cover the barcode, as long as it doesn't cover their barcode or their signature, they can tape it, that's not a problem. So we want to make sure that we're getting that word out. And we've talked to the post office as well to see if there's anything they can do in terms of how they're storing and getting things out to try to help us with that. Because when it, you know, it's the humidity that will sometimes do it. So we are, like I said, we're trying to work on getting poll workers, getting the word out about different things we're doing, making sure that we, and we will have all the PPE available that we had before, making sure we've got the Plexiglas shields between the voters and the poll workers. Poll workers are all going to be taking their temperatures before they start in the morning, they'll be filling out the COVID questionnaire. All poll workers will be required to wear a mask. We also provide shields, facial shields if a poll worker would like those. We have the six-foot social distancing tape that will be put out, that's in English and in Spanish. We have laminated our secrecy sleeves so that, to the extent they have to be reused, they're going to be wiped down with disinfecting wipes before they're sent back out because of the concern with paper. We have masks available for our voters, we have gloves available for poll workers and voters. We have single-use pens, they say "I voted," but that way a person doesn't have to reuse somebody else's pen. So they'll be able to take their pen that says "I voted" and take it with them. We got a really good deal with using end runs, so we actually did have, in the "no good deed goes unpunished" category, we had people calling to complain that somebody went to this early voting site and they got this kind of pen, then they went to that early voting site and they got that kind of pen, and they wanted to know how I chose who got what pen. And I can promise you, I have no idea what kind of pens we have, I didn't open every box, we agreed to take the end runs of everything to make it less expensive, and as long as it was black ink and it said "I voted," we didn't care. So yes, there will be different types of pens at different places, and there is no primary reason, they come in a sealed box and we send them there. So just so you know, there's, we're not picking favorites on our pens. So anyway, we want to thank you as partners at the county. Our staff has been fantastic to work with, commissioners, you have been fantastic to work with. We love being your partners, and we are committed to putting on a great election with you and for you and for our residents here. And anything that we can do that you learn, we want to hear from you, we want to be able to answer, you know, all the questions that come up. We're looking forward to it being accurate, of course, fair and transparent, and making sure that every vote counts. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. That was a wonderful presentation. We'll start with Vice Mayor Weinroth and then move to Commissioner Valache.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Supervisor Link, and congratulations. I know many of the voters will wonder why your name is not on this ballot, and that was because you won your election during the open primary back a few months ago. So congratulations. On those envelopes, I would just make a suggestion that, you know, they're self-seal envelopes that a lot of the vendors will use, and maybe we should consider those in the future so that, you know, you pull off a little piece of plastic or something so that they don't find themselves getting sealed.
We will look in, yeah, we, it's something we've talked about now that this has become an issue. Of course, those are more expensive, so, yeah, we will absolutely take a look at that because you're right, it is.
Yeah, humidity is certainly the enemy of glue down here, and so, but I will be stopping at your office today, I have a little present for you, so, but I want to reckon, just remind our voters that they need to be signing these things.
Yes.
Are you seeing a lot of these arrive without signatures?
Not a lot, actually, no. We are, I mean, we are getting some, and so what we will do, as soon as we receive them, if they're not signed, they immediately get a letter sent to them. And then I noticed I could see on yours that you did fill out the optional information, that information that's there is optional, it's required by statute that we request it, but it's not required that the voter fill in that information. But if they do, we also use that information if there's a problem with their signature, either because it doesn't match or because they forgot to do it. We have worked with a company called One Call, and so they will receive a recorded message from me, they'll call at least 10 times before they call, let us know that they haven't. They'll also send emails and texts using that information. So, and we get reports on that daily in terms of who they've been able to reach and not. So we'll do that, plus a letter if anybody does forget to do that.
A lot of my constituents have raised concerns, not, number one, of course, with the operational difficulties at the post office, worrying whether their ballot will arrive. But the second has been that there's some concern about signatures. And I had seen a long line of people depositing their ballots in South County. Are you validating the signatures at that time? Do you have the time to do that, or?
When people request us to, we do. So we do have some people who will stand in the line, who are willing to stand and want to stand in line so that they can, that what they want to do is they want to see their signature to see how they did it. Sometimes people show up without it signed because they want to see what signature they have on file. So if they do that, we're absolutely able to show that to them.
Good.
A lot of people are, would rather, they don't want to wait in that line, so they're just dropping them. But especially now, we have plenty of time to get to them because we are doing, it's called the Relia Vote, where we're checking those signatures. So we are, depending upon what time of day we get something, we're either getting through all of them that evening or by the next, by noon the next day so that we can really quickly get the information out to everybody.
Great. I love the idea of making it more accessible for people to deposit their envelopes in your mobile vans. My, my word of caution is that, you know, in the silliness of this election, you know, people are used to being spoofed with, with phone calls that are their own phone number or a phone number that looks like their, their exchange. I'm just worried that we may have people out there that spoof and put out vans that allegedly are going to collect ballots that are not going to be your workers. And I hope that there'll be some way of clearly indicating that these are Supervisor of Election vans, that there'll be some sort of publicity of where those are located so that we don't have the potential for some silliness of people collecting ballots in places where they shouldn't be.
I agree with you, and yes, we will be putting that out. We actually only have one site left to save just because we want to make sure that, that the places that are not early voting locations, that we are, that we have confirmation from them, that we are going to be able to leave the vans there. But that's why we're getting them wrapped, and we will be letting everybody know, we opted to not go with just putting magnets on them to indicate that they're ours because we know that's pretty easy to copy. So we will have them, it'll be very, very easy to tell that they are vans, and they will also have a table that indicates that it's ours. Like I said, we have a very special drop box that's our drop box, as well as the people will be wearing Supervisor of Election shirts and with identification for them. So we're going to try to do that, and we're going to actually publicize, like, sort of the drop off in a kit, this is what it looks like. And so if it doesn't look like this and it's not at one of these locations, don't go there.
Right.
So we're trying to make it very special, that's why we actually went with, and I thank Todd and Issa Mee for helping us to secure those vans, because we wanted to make sure that we could get very consistent vans so that people knew exactly what they were getting with.
One of the things we were hearing as a body here from our constituents is they were annoyed that their primary ballots said that they were what party, either Republican, NPA, or Democrat. These don't say that because it's a general election.
Right, don't, don't need to. So, yeah, and, and that's actually across the state, just so you know, it's not just Palm Beach County in the primary because you do get different ballots, and that's how the inserter knows which, what to insert in your thinking is on that barcode. But for the general, it does not show that because obviously it doesn't matter, everybody's getting the same ballot.
Right, so no one's throwing away the, the election results from one party or the other?
No, no, nothing like that.
Okay. And then finally, I just wanted to thank you. You did mention that we had supported the idea of the business reply envelopes, but really, it was your decision to go forward with that and it would not withstand the fact we were willing to fund it. It was your decision to go forward. I thank you. We all look very bright now, pre-pandemic, for having made that decision.
Yes.
So thank you again, and good luck with this election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. We'll move to Commissioner Valache and Commissioner Weiss.
Morning, Ms. Link. So it's similar to what the Vice President, Vice Mayor was asking you, instant promotion. But are you reviewing and tabulating these mail-in ballots as they come in?
Right, so we are reviewing them now as they're coming in. We are not permitted yet to begin tabulating.
I know that's not your policy, but it seems, you know, counterintuitive. If we're going to have a slew of mail-in ballots and we've got them.
Right.
Why, what is the rationale for us not starting to count them as soon as they come in?
Right, by statute. So what we are doing is we're processing them right now. So we are processing, meaning we are checking voter, we're giving them voter history, checking the voter history to make sure that we haven't received, at this point, it would only be a second vote by mail, right? But it's later on, we'll be checking against early voting as well, and at the end, of course, on Election Day. So right now, we're checking voter history, and then we're giving voter history, and we're checking all the signatures.
Do you anticipate you'll be able to count all of the mail-in ballots on Election Day?
Oh, we won't be counting on Election Day, we just can't start yet. We're going to start on the 10th, this Saturday.
Oh, okay.
So we're doing our logic and accuracy test on the 9th, which is the earliest day we can do it, and then we start counting on the 10th.
With the presumably large number of new absentee voters, are you seeing a higher rejection rate?
Not yet, no, we're actually not. We're, we're, it's right now, everything is pretty consistent with what we normally see. And again, just to remind people that it's about 1/3 of 1% that ultimately don't get cured and get rejected. So it's a very small number. Always, it's always been, you know, for us, at least since I've been here, it's always been under half a percent. In the March election, it was a little over 0.2%. For August, it was 0.359%, so about 3.6%, but again, just over 1/3 of 1%.
And last question, in terms of your firewalls, are you detecting, you know, hackers trying to get into the system?
We are, it's already, it's already big, right? So we have, we are working, in fact, we have a-
And how sophisticated are they on a?
Well, we're stopping them.
Yeah, right now.
Yeah, so we, we have a tabletop exercise actually tomorrow with the FBI to go over that type of thing and sort of the what-if scenarios even, and that's going to be statewide. But we do know, we're now part of the Albert Security System, which we hadn't been, so this is, Palm Beach County was the last one, but we are now part of that, where the Homeland Security, Center for Internet Security, the CISA group, they are monitoring it for the entire state, and we are getting reports as to where those things are coming from and what they're doing. So I know they are increasing, but so far, we've been very successful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Valache. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you, Supervisor. I just, could you just go over, I think, you know, while people hopefully are watching this, and, or maybe they'll watch it later, the do's and don'ts of vote by mail. What should people do and what should people not do with their vote by mail?
Thank you. So the number one thing is what we want you to do is sign it. You know, there's a big red box and you need to sign it. If you have any questions about your update, about what your signature looks like, and if it has changed, and we do have a number of people for various reasons tremors or things that have gone to an X for their signature, and that's okay. They just need to make sure that they have updated their signature. So a do would be, if your signature has changed, please update your signature with us before you send in your vote by mail ballot so that we have your updated signature to check your vote by mail ballot. If not, of course, we will have time right now to do that cure. So if you do get a letter from us that says there's been a problem with your signature, make sure you're immediately following it. We are, again, going that extra step. Instead of just referring you to our website, which is what we're required to do by statute to tell you where to get the Signature Cure Affidavit, we're actually enclosing the Signature Cure Affidavit with a self-addressed stamped envelope in, when we send you the letter so that it make it easy for you to send back. So make sure if you do get that, get it done quickly. You do not have to come to our office, you know, a lot of COVID concerns, people want to send it in, they can do that. I would encourage you, again, if you have any questions and you're not sure and you just aren't able to do any of these other things, consider giving us at least one way to reach you so that if there is an issue in addition to the mail, because as we get to reach you, so that if there is an issue, in addition to the mail, because as we get closer, if all we're able to do is send you a letter, then of course, we're going to be dealing with mail to deal with that. So give us one additional way to reach you, so that we can do that. Obviously, make sure you put your ballot in. We have had people ask us, well, what if I don't want to vote for everybody? Does that mean my ballot, that you're not going to count my votes? No, we're going to count the votes that you vote for those races. So just make sure you're checking in that you're not voting for more than one, in an area where it's a vote for one person. Our ballots are, we tried to make them very consistent, to make for ease, and it'll also help us in case we have a recount. But we have, every ballot is two pages, and every ballot has a front and a back of both pages. So it's four-sided ballot. So one of the do's is make sure you're checking both sides of the ballot and voting that. Again, it is circles, it's a fill-in-the-circle, so you want to actually color in the circle. Don't just circle the entire thing, don't do arrows pointing to where you want to go. The way the machine's going to read that vote is by looking at the circles and reading in those very distinct areas. So please fill in those circles, and don't have a lot of stray marks that would go into another circle, because the machine could read that as an overvote.
One of the questions people ask is, so what if I sign my name, and let's say when I filled out my application, I had put my middle initial, and I don't put my middle initial, am I going to get rejected?
No, no, you're not. So what we're doing is, everybody who is looking at the signatures has had a minimum of a two-hour signature verification course, and nobody gets rejected, just so everybody knows too. You won't get rejected ultimately unless the three-person canvassing board makes that determination. So it will be referred by Person 1 in our office, and if it gets referred, it gets referred to a manager to then do a second review, and if they still aren't confident with that signature, it will get referred to the canvassing board. In the meantime, we'll have sent out signature cure information. But what we're looking at is, can we tell that this is in fact your signature? So the fact that you would include a middle initial, or a full middle name, or not, isn't going to make it that we can't tell if this is your signature.
Okay. And then, I think, lastly, when you're looking, looking at these ballots, vote by mail, would you, just to, how would a voter know whether you've received their ballot? And then I know one of the questions I got during the August primary was, well, I saw my vote wasn't counted, so can you explain that?
Sure. So we, you can, the easiest way to do it, you can certainly call our office anytime, and we'll give you that information. But 24/7, you can go onto the website, to the My Status button. That button is going to, it's a great one for people to go to anyway, because we want you to update your address, and that's going to tell you what address we have on file, remembering, of course, that things can't be, ballots cannot be forwarded. But when you go to that My Status button, it's going to show a tracking device that has four numbers. The first one says you requested a vote by mail ballot. Second one says that we have sent it. It will tell you what day we sent it, and what address we sent it to, because some people have a ballot address different than their residential address. The third will show whether or not we've received it. If, once we receive it, if there's a problem with your signature, everything on the tracking bar is blue, different shades of blue. If there's a problem with your signature, it's actually red, and it will have an alert underneath it that tells you what the signature, what the issue is, and tells you to contact us. And it also gives you, helps you get to the signature cure affidavit. Then, at the end, it will turn to voted. And that, right now, we have, it turns to voted, not, or until counted, I'm sorry, until 7:00 on Election Night, because that is in fact when we count the votes. We are looking, there are some counties who have made the decision to call it counted, you know, beforehand. We're working with the vendor, because right now, the only option that it has is you either count, show them as counted at the time that they're received, or you show them as counted on Election Night. The problem with showing them counted at the time they're received is, somebody could look at it, say, oh, good, my vote counted. And then later that day, or the next day, we are going through the signature verification process and determine there is a problem with your signature. Those who are showing it's counted as soon as they receive it, now have to show it, undo it, show it not as counted. And our, our decision at the county level was, that was worse, that I don't want people to have a false sense of security that their ballot was counted, just because it showed that way that we received it. So we actually have the tracking go through the full steps. We are working with the vendor, that if there's a way that, once we know that the signatures are correct, if we can then show as counted when it's ready to be tabulated, we'll do that. So they're hoping to be able to do that before Election Day, but if, so if we can, we'll do that. If not, then it'll show as counted on Election Day. But there's a notation on top of it that indicates that's what's going on.
So if they, if a voter sees that their ballot has been received by, their vote by mail ballot has been received, then they should, at that point, and they don't see any errors on it, they should be confident that come Election Day, that's going to switch from received to counted. But that doesn't happen until 7:00. And then last, the last thing is, when you, when you're, when you're counting or tabulating, because that's, I guess, the terminology you all use, so you tabulate, you're actually running these vote by mail ballots through your equipment that is tabulating those ballots, and then, right, you know, after 7:00, somebody pushes a button, and out pops the results from those ballots. So here in Palm Beach County, and I assume the rest of Florida, first ballots that are counted are going to be these vote by mail ballots.
Right. So when we do our very first release of results, it's a combination of the early voting results, and all of the vote by mail that's been received by Monday night. So everything that we've received through the day before the election will be counted and released in that very first tally release. The, what we, what we receive on Election Day will be being processed, so there's a chance that some of Election Day will also be in that first set, but if not, it'll be throughout the day.
Great, great. Thank you very much, and thanks for the great work you all are doing over there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yeah, two questions, Wendy. The first one, if somebody has a vote by mail ballot, and they haven't turned it in on Election Day, can they take that to the poll, and drop it off and vote in person?
No. Florida statutes don't allow us to collect vote by mail ballots at the polling locations on Election Day. So the only place on Election Day that we can accept a vote by mail ballot is one of our four offices. So our outer offices stay open until 5:00 on Election Day, so they can turn in a ballot on Election Day at the, up till 5:00 at our outer offices, and then up until 7:00 at our main office. But if they go on Election Day, and they have their, and they want to turn in, because they can't get to one of those four offices, they can vote in person, they can take a picture of that vote by mail ballot, and use that picture of their vote by mail ballot to be a guide to them when they get in, really to use it almost as a sample ballot. But they won't be permitted to take that vote by mail ballot into the polling location to vote, because that's going to be two live ballots with one voter. So you can't do that. But they will be permitted to take a picture of it. As opposed to, by the way, their sample ballots, if somebody has a sample ballot, or they printed something off on the website, they can take that into the polling location.
Okay, so if I've received, which, camera crew caught me, Commissioner Weinroth, when I was dropping off my ballot, so it's no secret that I voted already. But let's say I have a ballot at home, I've not completed that ballot, I realize on Election Day I haven't mailed it, I can still go vote in person. Do I need to bring that blank ballot, or I can just ignore it?
No, as long as you have not sent it in, then you're not going to have voter history, so you will be able to go. They will ask you, the poll worker will say, you know, Commissioner McKinley, I see that you have a vote by mail ballot requested, did you send that in already? And you say, no, I didn't. And they're going to say, okay, well, when you get home, you should just get rid of it, because this will now be your voting history. So as soon as you check in at the polls, that will then give you voting history. So say you had forgotten, and your mail ballot had been sent in, and we receive it 20 minutes after you have voted at the polls, it will get outstacked and kicked out, because you will now have voting history.
Okay. And then my second question, and if you answered already, my apologies. In terms of the security cameras at the other locations throughout the county, where are we on that timeline? And is there, obviously, people are turning these ballots in already, is there any way to expedite the installation of those cameras?
I think it's, I'll turn it on, but I think it's actually, they have expedited it. Once the county made the determination that, because it really was against county policy, as I understand it, for us to have those cameras, which is why we haven't had them before. But once the county was gracious and agreed to allow us to have those, facilities immediately started looking for how they could quickly get those cameras up. And it was initially going to be a three-week timeframe, and I believe it's already been escalated to where they'll now complete it in two. So as I understand it, they're expecting to complete that by the end of the week?
Yeah, so we are doing the cabling tomorrow at those three locations, and facilities order the cameras, they'll be delivered, and they should be coming in tomorrow, and they'll be installed by the end of the week.
Thanks, T-Bone.
Yep, no problem.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized, and we'll go to Vice Mayor Weinroth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Wendy, just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you very much for being here. I did check the My Status, and so I looked up my ballot, and it said that it was received on September 30th, so...
Excellent. Thank you for voting.
My question is, you had mentioned that the outer offices, they close at 5:00. Is there any potential, or in the future, of keeping them open till 7:00? Or is there a rationale for closing them at 5:00 instead of 7:00?
The, well, the rationale is because we have to have, we're supposed to have all the ballots in our main office by 7:00. So in March, when we had some issues, we got an extension, and we were allowed to keep our outer offices until 7:00, but that is not the norm. And so we, and they also, they've got to get back up, because, especially when we have Belle Glade and South County, where those take a long time to get in. Once they get in, then they take a long time to process. So vote by mail is very process-intensive, again, with checking signatures, checking voter history, and then just getting the opening process and tabulation. So we're trying to get those ballots up to us, so that we can get them processed and out, because we know that people do have a tendency to wait till the last minute. And again, that's about, probably at least a four-to-five hour process, from the time that they're dropped off there, till we can actually count those ballots. And I know people are waiting to get those results as soon as they can. So it's really a process matter of getting them, count, because they close their office, then they begin counting them. And I will tell you, we will probably have, like, and they're, they're counting them by hand to do the transfer forms, and we're expecting, you know, we'll have 4,000 to 5,000 at each office, at least at our big offices, and we're expecting probably 10,000 at our office on Election Day in the main office. So it's just so that they can get those counted, processed, and then brought back up to the office.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just one follow-up, Supervisor. I had been told in years past that if you had asked for a vote by mail ballot, but decided to either do early voting, or to go in on Election Day, that you should bring the ballot with you, it would be easier to invalidate the ballot, rather than having to call into the main office to find that you had not voted, so they could clear you and not give you a provisional ballot. And I had been telling that to stakeholders. You told Commissioner McKinley, you should not bring it with you to the polling place. Can you please clarify, what's the proper procedure?
Sure. Well, I think that what you may be thinking about is that the statutes have changed, so there, there was a time where you, if you were, if you had received a vote by mail ballot, that you had to turn it back in, surrender it, in order to vote at the polls. That's no longer required. So if people do bring it, and they can, they'll just write spoiled across it, and we do have separate white boxes at each of our polling locations, where voters can submit spoiled vote by mail ballots that are not going to be counted, because they are going to vote. So if somebody does bring it, because a lot of our voters are used to the old law, and they believe they can, that's not a problem, they'll just put it into our spoiled box, and we account for those, and we know that those are there. But they won't be able, what I, what I don't want people to do is bring the ballot, their vote by mail ballot, as a sample ballot, because that is a live ballot, and we can't have a voter with two live ballots in the, in the polling location.
So to clarify, would that expedite the process of registration at the poll, if you brought the old ballot with you, so that they can see that you have not voted, what now, I guess, in the, in the book says, you have a vote by mail ballot outstanding?
It will, it will help only in the sense if we're having a communication problem. Like, for example, in March, Verizon had an outage for about eight hours on Election Day. So when that happens, we can't get that communication, so they do have to do things like, stop, I have to call the office and check. But as long as we don't have anything like that going on, then we're going to be able to have our new equipment that you all gave us the money for, thank you again. That new equipment gives us voter history in real time, so we won't have to call the office to do that. As long as everything's working properly, we'll be able to tell, without calling the office, that you did not submit your vote by mail ballot.
So explain, in what circumstance would a person be handed a provisional ballot? If they came in and presented themselves on Election Day, or even early voting, what would be the circumstances that would require that a provisional ballot be given to the person who has presented themselves, and allowing then your office to make a decision later on whether they were qualified to cast a ballot?
Okay, so the provisional ballots are going to come, on the vote by mail side, it's going to be because we show that you returned a vote by mail, so we have voting history for you. And we do have, some of our more mature voters, they get them earlier, and they come, because we send them out so early, they received it, and they actually forgot that they voted. And oftentimes, once they come in our op, we'll tell them that they, that we have them voted, they think they have not yet voted, and so then, we don't ever turn a voter away, because if, if there is a mistake, we don't want to take that voter's opportunity to vote. So if there is any question, then we give that voter a provisional ballot, and that way, it's not being scanned and counted at that time. But it gives us the opportunity then, to, to the canvassing board, we then will print out the voter's signature that we have on file, we'll print out a copy of, or present the actual vote by mail ballot that we received for that person, and say, here's the signature, you know, here's the vote by mail ballot that, you know, the envelope that we received from that person, you can see that was already voted, and so then, the canvassing board would likely reject that provisional ballot that they did in person. The other reason would be, somebody comes to the polls without ID. So if you come to the polls without ID, again, you're not going to be turned away, but you'll be given a provisional ballot, because we need to then have the opportunity for our staff to research and to present to the canvassing board all of the backup history information that shows, this is in fact your correct polling location, this is in fact your correct address, and that this is your correct signature. And that's how they'll, so they basically treat it like a vote by mail at that point, where they're comparing the signature with the signature on file. Because when you're checking in, the person checking in, they don't see your signature on file. They're having you sign, but they can't compare your signature on file, they're just comparing it to an ID. So that's when you would give a provisional ballot.
Okay. And just to remind our residents, one date is behind us, and that was the date of registration, that's now over as of yesterday, on the 19th, that you will open up your early voting locations at 7:00 AM.
Correct.
Anybody can present themselves, who lives in Palm Beach County, is a registered voter, at any of those sites.
Correct.
On October 24th is the last day that they can ask for a mailed ballot, that they can still...
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, but they can still walk in and ask for one after that date, if they're so inclined.
Correct.
And then, of course, Election Day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, only at your assigned precinct.
You need to get a job with me. Yeah, you got it down pat.
When I retire from here.
Yeah, you got it down pat. Yes, all of that is correct. The only thing I would add is, that yes, we can't mail you one after, as you mentioned, but the other thing that people sometimes don't know about is, if somebody didn't get a vote by mail request, but there's a reason, somebody's ill, it doesn't even have to be a reason, you're just trying to be a good friend. You can, with a proper affidavit, you can do a counter pickup for yourself, but you can also do it for your family members, and for up to two people per election who are not related to you. As long as you bring that affidavit, you can come pick up a ballot for your neighbor, for your friend, or for your family members.
What time do you think we're going to know the results on that Election Day?
It depends on how many people are going to turn in their ballots really late on Tuesday. So our big push is going to be that, you know, we really, we want you to get those ballots in as early as possible, but if, you know, please don't wait until Election Night. The other thing that's really important, that, if I could, another one more minute here, is, people, there's a difference between vote by mail and voting in person, that's very, very important for people to know who are waiting till the last minute. If you go to vote in person and you are there at 6:59, 59, if there's two people in line or if there are 500 people in line, our poll worker's going to get behind you and anybody who's in line before 7:00 will be permitted to vote, however long that takes. If it's midnight and you're still voting, you're still voting and that counts. And that's not a provisional vote, that is your regular vote. Different, though, is vote by mail. The statute is not written the same and the statute for vote by mail is it must be in our office, no later than 7:00 PM. So, if there is a line of cars trying to get in or a line of people trying to get in to turn in their ballot, or a line of people trying to put it into the drop box, we can't take it at 7:00. And I know, because we've been told, that various parties and campaigns and candidates will be there filming to make sure that in fact at 7:00, that is the last time that we are accepting those things.
And your representative will be at the post office to pick those up at 7:00?
We will, we will absolutely have people at the post office. We're actually working with the post office now to see if there's anything else that we can do. We are very fortunate that we are very close to our main post office, right there on Summit, so that's very helpful. But we are actually working with the Postal Service to see, is there anything that we could do that we should be doing that day that would allow us to get more of those ballots in? Because obviously, the worst thing we get is a ballot on the next day.
So, postmarked on that day is not good. It's got to be in your physical custody at 7:00 PM.
The only exception to that is overseas military and that's, as I say, a very small exception, but those that are postmarked by Election Day but received by us up till 10 days following the election, if you're military overseas, those are different. Other than that, everybody else, it has to be in our hands and that's very difficult. So, we want, we don't want people waiting and driving up and being in line or being in a car line for vote by mail, because at that point, there's no opportunity for them to get in line in person and there's no opportunity for them to bring it. So, we're going to be doing, you'll see a very big public relations push that last week to get these ballots in early. We cannot accept them under any circumstances after 7:00, unless for some reason the governor does, you know, issues an order that, but assuming not, that's going to be the case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. We'll go back to Commissioner Weiss.
One, one thing I forgot to ask you about on the do's and don'ts. A lot of times, you have multiple envelopes going to the same household, vote by mail. Can you talk about that and what people need to be aware of?
Right, so kitchen counter mix-ups, we call them, or the M&amp;M's, Mistress and Misses is. And so, we are, we'll do everything we can to make every ballot count. So, we will, when we see somebody has, you know, Jane Smith has signed John Smith's ballot and John Smith signed Jane Smith's ballot, because they really weren't focused or paying attention to the name or the barcode on the envelope, we will hold those aside and we'll present them to canvassing board and say, this is Jane Smith, this is John Smith. The beauty of the, as long, if they have actually put, there's a place, again, not required, just helpful. The voter certificate, this time, we actually put a line, says I blank, you know, and then it gives you the full voter certificate. Somebody doesn't fill it in, no problem, we know who you are, because we have your name on the barcode. But if you did, so if Jane Smith picked up John Smith's envelope, even though that signature's not going to match what we have on file, we can tell when that's a completely different name. If that sign, if that certificate, though, was written by Jane Smith and Jane Smith signed it and Jane Smith had, sorry, a vote by mail request on file, then we can actually accept it, because that's the voter certificate for Jane Smith, doesn't matter. Again, making sure it's the same household, therefore, it would have been the same ballot style. So, we're going to do everything we can to make that work. But if not, we need you to make sure, look at the barcodes on that envelope and make sure you're signing, especially if it's not, somebody that's not related to you, sharing the same household, those aren't as easy for us to notice. So, again, we'll still try to fix those, but those are a problem.
So, the, just to remind people, when, when they're on the return envelope, there is a barcode, there's also, there's precinct information on there, but there's, their